Discussion. Dissions, deletions, other criticisms. Things you want to tell Zeke that you don't like about him.
You put on a sport coat, but you gotta take those glasses off.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments or correspondence? Is there anyone in our audience who would like to make a comment about a non-agenda item? Good evening, Virginia. No comments. Correspondence?
I guess we have a few items. The first of which is a thank you note sent from SBAA for our support of the Shortbread Festival. Card enclosed in your packets. Second item being a letter of thank you for the gift sent in memory of the Coopers to our organization's partners in Compassion. That's up at Scand. The other one, if any of you enterprising individuals would care to do service for the Walker administration, that included the latest DOA newsletter, which lists out the various councils, commissions, and other boards that citizens are requested to submit their names and nominations to serve on, along with the, as you all are aware, the shortage of propane, the state of the Hudson City. It was declaring the resources that were allocated for that. That's included in that letter also. That is it. Our written correspondence.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else from any of the committees that you want to? Item number one, new business. Consider a motion to adopt Resolution 282-031814 supporting SB 566-911 Center Funding. Zeke?
So essentially, I got a call from our county administrator asking us to take a look at this. Basically, there's a bill coming to the Senate that will change the way 911 centers are currently funded. Right now, that is funding, the primary funding source for that is a tax placed on landlines. As you all know, technology has changed over the years, and as a consequence, we now are very cellphone-dependent as opposed to landline-dependent. And so, funding is essentially dwindled from landlines while use of cellphones is proliferated. So, one of the things that this will do is to get rid of the single fee, sorry, I said tax, or fee on landlines, and replace that with a universal fee on all lines of service, so cellphones or whatever. The other thing this will do is direct funding into one single item or one center per county. And for rural counties, this is sort of standard operating procedure. So, we're being asked to support this. This has been through our fire board there in support of it. All around, I think it's a very good measure for us to get behind. Go ahead. I was gonna say, essentially, it keeps things static here in Door County for better or worse.
I can add a couple little tidbits to it. This was also passed by the county board last month by a number of other municipalities also throughout the state. What happened in case of Door County, and this directly affects everyone's taxes, is last year, for the first time, AT&amp;T runs the landlines for the 911 center. And we were sent a bill of about $20,000 that we'd never received before. And that was because of the lack of funding coming from the fees charged to landline telephones. And in the past, that had been enough to cover the cost of the 911 center. It no longer is enough to cover. So, we now have to pay because everybody's getting rid of the landlines. So, the idea behind this bill, as Zeke had mentioned, was to let all users of the communication device have to pay the fee to fund the 911. Where the opposition coming to this bill is, there are a number of your large cities, Milwaukee, a couple of places, that operate their own municipal 911 centers rather than a county-wide 911 center. And so, they're putting up some, trying to put some restrictions in front of it. The vast majority of counties in Wisconsin have one call center in the county, much like Door County does. And with today's technology, if you thought about it, you could run your 911 center in Door County from Atlanta. Literally. And there are some places in the country that do that. They operate 911 centers in a different state than where their town, village, or city is. And very effectively. So, that's additional background.
The only question I have, as I understand the need for it, but I don't see anything in our resolution or anything about what the fee is gonna be. I think it said 40 cents for the landline. What is the fee gonna be for a cellphone?
I don't know if that's been established in the bill.
So, you're asking us to authorize something, but we have no idea what they're gonna put a number, or what number they're gonna put on it. You know, I mean, because, I mean, if they suddenly say, well, it's a $3 charge to a cellphone bill.
John, I guess what I can tell you is, I don't know in Minnesota how they do things, but this is pretty common practice across the country now, is that cellphones are being taxed in this manner. And it, in my mind anyway, should be based on a current account basis. In other words, what they were receiving previously, that's what they will probably base it off of moving forward. But as Dave mentioned, the gap in funding, that ends up falling back on local taxpayers as opposed to taxpayers. And since 1996, all cellphones are required to have GPS location and also 911 dialing capabilities. And so, Wisconsin is very much behind the eight ball.
I have no problem with doing it. I'm just saying, there's no fees. I mean, they listed what the landline was, but we just kinda left it open-ended.
And it will be adjusted with time as well. So, as population grows, conceivably, the fee will also grow.
And to be honest with you, I don't remember if, and I read most of the bill. I don't recall if there was a number in there or not. I know they talked about escalating due to cost of living, but I don't know if it was actually a fee.
There wasn't. I read the bill, it was on there in the meeting packet, and I saw the landline, 40 cents. But it says, okay, how much are they charging on a cellphone? Makes sense. I understand where they're going. But, you know, if you put your cellphone, there's already 10 different taxes on it, you know, that are listed as additional type thing. Is this another one that's just open-ended and?
It is. And conceivably, the legislature will be responsible for this in perpetuity. So, we'll have to hold their feet to the fire if they proceed to make the tax too burdensome.
You can call them personally, John.
Tell them you don't like it.
I'll tell them, I refuse to use my cellphone.
I'm gonna turn myself on and get a landline.
He's got one.
Comment on this. If you think about it, right, and my daughter's now done this twice since I've been up here in Door County, where she's gotten on and taken out on one button. We had a gentleman somewhere down around Sturgeon Bay not too long ago who got lost out on the ice. Does this ring a bell with anyone?
Yep.
And they essentially had to...
Happens all the time.
Yeah, well, he had to call and then hang up, move a little bit, call back, hang up, move a little bit, call, hang up, move a little bit. And so, they could plot a course, and by plotting a course, they could figure out where he was. Were able to rescue the guy. So, if you're out in Peninsula State Park or somewhere, and you happen to fall down and break your leg or something, you know, cellphone gets you 911 access. So, again, not a bad thing.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 281-021114, creating, oh, that's the wrong one. I'm just gonna say... Sorry, I'm a step ahead of you.
You go with it after me.
Resolution 282-031814, in support of Senate Bill 566.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, consider a motion to approve resolution adopting a local preference purchasing policy.
Okay. So, coming through the Finance Committee, the recommendation from the Finance Committee was that we need to provide some preference to local vendors. And of course, that enhances the local economy whenever those funds are circulated through the local economy. The question is, how much is too much? You know, at what point does it become gouging? And so, we set a number with this, and that number is 10%. So, if a local vendor is charging 10% or less for an item than what we could find, a comparable cost item for a basis somewhere else, we would give the preference to the local vendor. If the local vendor is over 10% more than what we could find at somewhere else on a national basis, we would have to purchase it from the lowest-cost provider. And that's essentially what this policy does, is compels us to take a look at how we're purchasing things and trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer money.
Give the locals a chance.
That's it. It gives them a chance, but also says, hey, we have a parameter for that.
I'm all favor of it, but looking at, I think it's page 17 of our agenda, or on our electronic device. You go down to paragraph A in there, or the second paragraph A, it says, "Local vendor's bid price will be reduced by 10% in comparing to others."
Correct.
That's very misleading, because if you read that paragraph, you say, okay, I got a bid, and I'm gonna take a local vendor and reduce it by 10%, but it never says in there that we're actually gonna pay him the 10% more.
I guess for clarification reasons, it's, when we're doing the calculation to find if a local vendor were to be awarded, we'd reduce their bid by 10% and then compare that number with the national number.
Right. But somewhere in there, you have to say that I'm not giving, I'm not paying, I'm not giving the local vendor 10% less in money. You're giving them what his bid is.
That's right.
Which is up to 10% more than the competitive bid. But the way the paragraph is written, it sounds like you're just reducing his 10% to award that bid.
When I put in there, "When comparing to other bids," that was simply what that is, is just for the comparison purpose. What I intend to do communicate there.
Do you have a different way of saying it, John?
Well, I would say somewhere I'd clarify it in there, that for comparison, we will reduce their bid by 10% to see if they're within that local vendor guidelines. And if they are, that contract will be awarded at their bid price. Okay? I don't want to have it misleading where the guy thinks that, geez, you took my bid, and you just knocked it down 10% because I'm a local vendor. That's what you, and you said you gave it to me, but you knocked 10% off.
Right. And they, again, they get the contract with the 10% on there, but I'm...
Right. But I just say, spell it out. If you're writing a rule, take the ambiguity out of it.
Yes, sir. John, any specific language to use there?
What did I just say? Afterbid price?
Vendor will receive...
For comparison purposes, it's reduce 10%. If they're awarded the bid, the bid will be lit at their bid price. Just so they know that they're not...
Right, the bid price as submitted.
Yeah, as submitted, yeah. The bid price as submitted. We're giving them the favorability of a 10%.
Julian?
I didn't think of this before, but it's gonna make a difference whether you're thinking of that we're willing to pay up to 10% more than a national vendor, or whether we're gonna take 10% off of the local vendor's price. Which way do you want to calculate? I thought originally that we were gonna say, we would pay up to 10% more than the lowest bidder.
I thought we were close.
It'll be...
Yeah, we give it to the local.
Yeah, it's like when we calculate...
So, whichever way you calculate between that...
Let me try an example. Make sure I'm not confused. A non-local vendor comes in at $95. A local vendor comes in at $102. We would take 10% off the price of the $102 from the local vendor, and he would be at $92. He would be awarded the bid, but he would be paid the $102.
That's exactly correct. But that's not what this says.
Ask Dave, should we put that in there?
And call my landline, too.
Go visit the soap shop, cleverly discounted as a gas item.
Donna?
What's gonna be considered local if there's more than one? What's local?
It has to be within the village.
Verify what I addressed in the village of Sister Bay.
Should we say local as Door County, though, versus Sister Bay? Because you may have a lot of contractors. For instance, I built my house with all local labor, but a lot of that came out of Sturgeon Bay. I mean, Lamperts was out of Sturgeon Bay, Albrechts was out of whatever. But that's all local in Door County, but it wasn't in Sister Bay, only because Sister Bay did not have a lumber, you know, a Lamperts there.
One of the issues that comes into play here is that anything that's a public construction contract, and it's gonna exceed $25,000, this policy completely gets kicked out anyway because of state law. And that's what I've got written in here. Also, if you start looking at things like equipment, you know, things of that nature, some of the specialized equipment that we purchased, like a trackless, that's not gonna be something that comes out of Door County.
But could you say maybe the village first? It'd be a hierarchy, and then if there isn't any village in Door County...
And most of this, it seems to me like it's gonna be pretty much local around here. What if we said Sister Bay, Liberty Grove? I mean, there's a lot of the contractors that we would use that are in Liberty Grove. So, may I have a clarification of local buying practices? From what I understood, what we were talking about was basically giving our taxpayers an advantage. Why should we go outside of our tax base? That's just a question.
You mean the village tax base?
Exactly.
But it is instead of the located inside the village.
Correct. So, outside of the village, I mean, my assumption is outside of the village is fair and competitive. If you can keep your prices fair and competitive, then I sure will use you. But if you can't meet our, then we have to do what's best for our pocketbook.
I can say, for somebody who may be supplying office goods that would want to make a go of it, and they wanna take us on as a customer locating inside the villages of Sister Bay, somewhere similar like Country Walk Shops, all of a sudden, maybe that 10% is the difference between them locating outside or inside, to your point.
To his point, though, I mean, let's put in perspective. We do a lot of work with Action Electric, okay? Action Electric is in Liberty Grove, is not in Sister Bay. I would consider him a local vendor, okay? And he spends his tax dollars, even though he lives in Liberty Grove, he spends all of his tax dollars going to the Piggly Wiggly and our Nor Door Clinic, and all of our services within Sister Bay. But, you know, but he's actually, you know, according to your definition, he's not a taxpayer in the village of Sister Bay. So, I think I would prefer to say that it's local, it's Sister Bay first, and then Door County. And then after that, you're, you know, because there's more outside of Liberty Grove, too, if you're in Fish Creek or whatever. So, just say Door County is Sister Bay slash Door County, then it's with weighted to Sister Bay first.
What do we want to tier it? If there is a, if it's Sister Bay, we're gonna go 1%? If it's Door County, we're gonna go another percent? Just keep it flat?
I think local, in my mind, is within Door County. But I would still, I'd prefer, if I had two bids, and one was from Fish Creek, and the other one was from Sister Bay, I would nod to Sister Bay as the number one, you know, the seed. But then the other one.
Okay, to your point, so, you still end up with the 10% factor? So, if you had two local contractors or two local suppliers, and they were competing for the same piece of business, if one came in at 101 and one came in at 99, the 10% difference is still gonna give it to them?
It's gonna give it to them, and you just pick there which one's closest to Sister Bay or...
They're gonna be inside of that, but now, do I go and select a Fish Creek vendor over a $2 difference? Dave's point, right?
Main Street versus Piggly Wiggly?
Yeah, you know, even though they fell inside that 10% guideline, one of them is lower than the other one. So, do I pick the one who's slightly lower that's further away? Or do I pick the one that's slightly more close?
Sister Bay first, okay? And then Door County. So, if you had a bid, and you had two bids from within Door County, and one of them was from Sister Bay, Sister Bay gets the weighting, okay, as the bid. If Sister Bay is way out of it, and Fish Creek is the next lowest, and then the next one's in Green Bay, Fish Creek gets it, you know, or Door County.
I guess if this is gonna be a staff policy, why murky the waters? Because if you want people to abide by this, for them to go back and have to look through a PowerPoint presentation on how they should buy and where they should buy from, isn't gonna be practical. The purpose of this is, from what I understood when we were discussing it originally, was to give preferential treatment to our taxpayers. And then outside of that, it's really to protect our local businesses, because who can compete with online right now? Nobody. At the present moment, there's nobody here within our village that can compete. So, it's giving them that leg up, because you know you can go online to OfficeMax and get cheaper than here. So, we're giving that 10%, saying, we really want to support you guys, but you gotta give some so we can get. And I think if you start mucking the waters, where you're going, okay, from 10 miles, you get an 8%, you know, it's just, it's gonna be hard to make that division. So, I think there just has to be a clear-cut line. I don't think we can say, well, if, if it's outside of Sister Bay, we can find it cheaper online? Do it, because it's also about the bottom line, too, because it does affect our taxpayers. So, I think all around, we're watching for our taxpayers. Just my opinion.
So, how about if we use it as written for, quote, "Sister Bay businesses, Sister Bay taxpayers"? See how it goes. And if we run into instances where it would make a difference to somebody versus Fish Creek versus Green Bay, and there wasn't somebody within Sister Bay that could do it, then we revisit if we need to look at making a change. And this is our first stab at trying to do some type of local preference.
Well, I like the local preference. I just think you're really limiting yourself. You got a plumber, and you don't have an electrician. I mean, you have very few people that fall within that Sister Bay as a business that could fall into it.
And to those points, what you're talking about with plumbers and electricians, right? Most of them, I would imagine, are gonna get bids on for small jobs that aren't gonna be in that public construction guideline.
We have a lot of money we spent with Action Election for $8,000, $7,000, $5,000. But it's Action Election. And if you write it to the point, you know, Sister Bay only, he's included. He's out of it.
I guess what I'm getting at is that he's...
No, he wouldn't be included. If there was nobody else in Sister Bay to bid against him for that amount.
Right. Then he's bidding with everybody else. Again, seeing as, I were on Peninsula, it's just from the last couple of projects we've gone through, it's hard enough just to find folks that bid on those things.
Okay, explain to me how he's included if you said you left it to Sister Bay.
He wouldn't be included in the 10%.
How would he be?
Because he's from Sister Bay better.
He wouldn't lose the job.
He would lose the job, no. He wouldn't get the favorability of the 10%.
There wouldn't be anybody competing with him.
Yeah, there's nobody fighting with him.
But he doesn't get that 10%.
Because the people that are gonna bid against him are gonna be out of Sturgeon Bay South. So... Yeah, conceivably, if he's coming up to do the job, but it's not gonna be a $25,000 threshold job, then his proximity to us should more than compensate for his mobilization costs.
Green Bay or the Sturgeon Bay people may not want to come up here.
They may not, but they do, they bid a lot lower than our locals do. Continually. I mean, it's not an exception. It's continually, they bid a lot lower than our locals do. So, if we're trying to get a local favor, then how do you...
What we just came across was a bid for insulation, okay? The local bidder came up with 2.5 inches of insulation. The Green Bay bidder came up with 3 inches of insulation, okay? So, now we're talking apples and oranges. The price difference between them for 2.5 inches or 3 inches were really close. But if the next guy went to a 3-inch insulation package, he's bidding one up $10,000, the local gentleman. And we're massaging that out every way we can massage it out. It just couldn't get there on a comparable product, compared apples to apples.
And I think a lot of times, you're not gonna get there. I mean, you're gonna find that that's just the way it is. But if the intent of the law is to try to get some, you know, favor to our taxpayer base and our local businesses, as well as, to your point, trying to get them to pony up and say, hey, you know, be within, you know, be realistic, if we can buy it online for a heck of a lot cheaper, and make the money and stay there, I think you have to keep it outside of just the city limits or village limits of Sister Bay. I think it has to be local-definied, Door County, you know, or at least Liberty Grove. I mean, you're, I mean, we have so few businesses within our village that we're doing it. You know, again, I built the house, and it's all Door County, but it was, a lot of it was not here. Some of it was.
I can tell you to Shane's point, and this is one that may come into play here in the not-too-distant future. Since we've discussed how we're gonna be handling our landscaping, there is a local company who would like to submit a bid for flowers. There are other Door County communities, or other Door County companies who also are gonna be tapped for that. So, if we expanded to Door County, our local taxpayer, to Shane's point, would not benefit substantially, even though he pays taxes inside the village. Maybe the guy down the road, all of a sudden, is on equal par with him. And so, it's really a question of who do we, who do we want to support? Inside Sister Bay, the actual taxpayers of Sister Bay, or, to your point, the brawler base of Door County? They both are admirable objectives.
Well, that's why I said Sister Bay first, and then Door County, and then it doesn't apply.
Well, if you're gonna do that, I think back to what you said earlier, Zeke, about having that a two-tier percentage. You could do it that way. Because if you're gonna say first Sister Bay and then Door County, what if they're both the same? What if their bids are both the same? Which one has the...
Right. Which one you am referencing?
Or what if the Fish Creek one is just $2 lower, but...
Right. And this goes to the bi-local initiative, you know, Door County Economic Development Corporation's working on. And what do we consider local? And in Door County, at least in my experience, it's been Door County. But this is a public policy that you all are implementing, which means you're vanguards of the taxpayer's money.
If you were to do a percentage based on, you know, that hierarchical, 10% in the village, and then what would you do for Door County, non-village Door County?
Take a number off.
5%?
See, I agree with what Shane's saying. I don't want to see a two-tier. I think you can write it in the code very easily, Sister Bay first, and then Door County. And then it doesn't apply, period. I mean, if it's, you know, if you have a weighting, and I have a person in Sister Bay, and that 10% gives them the lowest, you know, bid, they get the bid. And if the guy's in Fish Creek, and he's $2 more, the 10% puts him down underneath it in Sister Bay.
And if he's $2 less?
If he's $2 less, Sister Bay gets the weighting. You know, it says Sister Bay first, you know, which means that 10% applies to Sister Bay first, then Door County.
So, how about if you'd word it, let's see, vendor, give a 10% vendor bid pricing preference for good materials and general services to a Sister Bay slash Door County business, which has been in existence for at least six months, with preference being given to the Sister Bay business? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it is. The first preference, or...
I think what we're doing here is, because there's a lot of money that is spent on, there's a lot of money that's spent in this village. And if we're giving 10%, we can effectively hurt or move our budget one way or the other by 10% if we give this to all local vendors. And that's why I believe, and I feel, that our taxpayers should be the ones that benefit. And outside of that, we can make an educated decision on where we want to go and how we want to do, based on proximity, time, faith, I mean, experience with work. Because I doubt you would go online and find an electrician in Milwaukee and bring him up here. I'm sure you're gonna do the right thing and, you know, find somebody that's close and will be able to service if anything goes wrong. I'm, I just look at it and say, if we're gonna pay 10% more for everything just because we want to keep it in Door County, and it's not from our taxpayers, that can affect our budget extremely. And I guess I look at it, because I was looking at it in that regard.
Yeah, and that could happen.
Because I, our taxpayers deserve the benefit, because it's their money we're using, our direct taxpayers. But outside of our direct taxpayers, I love the bi-local, I practice it myself. But when it's not practical, it's not practical. So, I don't know, I guess, I think outside of this, it's up to your judgment. I don't think we should impede you on how you want to spend the money outside of Sister Bay.
You can't leave it up to his judgment. If you're writing the code, you have to spell it out. And I agree with what you're saying.
No, you mean if it's not in Sister Bay, you're saying it's...
Exactly. If it's not, if the business is not in Sister Bay, it just doesn't apply.
And we're not trying, in that case, we're not trying to do something for, quote, "local" in Door County. This is applying, this is a small policy intended to assist and help businesses located in Sister Bay.
Yes.
So, having opened the Pandora's Box, I'd like to say that I agree with what Shane's saying right now. And if anything, is it possible for us to put in that we'd like to revisit this in a year and see how effective it is and, you know, what's...
Do we have the ability to ask and attack... To ask an attic question, we have an ability to flag payables with some kind of a note that they exercise this policy?
Flag the how? For the board to see?
Meaning everybody that receives some kind of an award based on this, is there some way we can flag it in the system?
So a year from now, we get a report that said these four companies got this preferential trigger.
Cut off the code or something.
Okay.
You need to, because you needed, to your point, you need to know how much did this cost me. You know, if it's busting the budget because we just, you know, spent...
Well, or is it not, or not, in which case we'd like to revisit?
And I, you know, but one of the, the thoughts behind this was, of course, we do want to support local businesses. However, when, speaking of what Shane said about the internet, when we have a local vendor that charges us eighty dollars for a case of paper, and to go out online and get it, it's thirty-six dollars for that same case of paper, right? At, at what point do we draw a line and say, hey, we, we love supporting you as a local business, we'll go ahead and upfront, we'll buy a whole pallet of paper from you, if you can get the, the price on it, we know we're gonna use it. However, you've gotta get us within this price point. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense to procure from that local vendor. Um, again, how much did it cost you in the long run? That's the point I'm getting at.
Do, do we want to, and this, lies against me being themselves, because I hated the people who did this, okay? Literally. But do we want, do we want to put a clause in there that if, to give a local vendor a chance to meet, you know, that price? Okay? So if they, if they lost the bid, and Pat's the, the local vendor, and he bid on it, and he was ten thousand dollars more than a Green Bay vendor, do we wanna say, we'll give you, lowering the price ten thousand, we'll give you a, a chance to get the bid?
Treading on thin ice.
Thin ice when you start, start talking about changing bids.
It will.
I would think.
Well, that's what you were talking about at reading the paper. You're beating them down on price, saying, hey, I'm, I can buy it a lot cheaper if you wanna meet it.
Essentially, what we'd be doing, and to John's point, is we'd be receiving an estimate, not a bid, because we're not required to receive bids under anything that isn't public construction and doesn't exceed twenty-five thousand dollars of value. So we're asking for an estimate. And if that estimate is exceeded by whatever it is, we can come back to the local vendor and say, hey, can you, can you come up with a better estimate?
It's not necessarily even an estimate. Sometimes it's just pricing.
Yeah.
I, I've done this already with, um, one of our managers prefers to buy cases of paper locally. And they cost way more than what we can get from Office Depot. And so I've talked to this store and asked them, you know, can you come closer to this price? They can't, you know? So they're, they probably wouldn't, wouldn't even manage to meet this.
My question then is, what are you doing? Are you still buying it locally? Or did you buy it from Office Depot?
Well, that's why we're having this policy.
So at the moment, each manager is doing what they want.
Yeah, that's it. Right now, your managers have the authority to go out and purchase based on historical precedence. What the policy does is uniformly send something across the board that says, hey, we wanna support something local. However, we don't wanna believe the taxpayers because we're supporting something local.
Well, there's a flip, flip side to that, too. You know, some people abuse that policy, and because you're, you know, the government, local, I'll, I'll charge you more.
Yep.
You know, because you can pay it.
That's right. We have an endless supply of money.
Yeah, we do.
Coming out of their pocket. They don't think that way.
Okay. Can we get a motion on this, or something for them?
I'll make the motion. We approve resolution two-eight-one, is that correct?
Yes.
Two-eight-one, zero-two, one-one, one-four, creating a local purchasing policy.
Do you want it as amended or presented?
Uh, as amended, as Mr. Claude indicated originally for clarification purposes.
Yes, yeah. That's correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
We'll move them right along.
Yep, a lot of scrolling.
Item number three, consider a motion to approve management goals for fiscal year 2014. Zeke?
So, I'll just clarify this. It's one of the things that I feel like I need to be equipped to do a good job for you all, is to have some guidelines about the goals and objectives that I'm after. I'm not asking the board, uh, at this point, to develop its own goals and objectives, largely because we have so many irons in the fire at this point, and it almost seems superfluous. However, when we're working down at a staff level, I would like to have some targets for things that we're working to achieve on a consistent basis. So I, after being here for a number of months, outlined five areas that I think we can do a much better job on. Um, and they're detailed in the board report there. Number one, ensuring that operational expenditures do not exceed budgeted sums. I feel like we owe it to the taxpayers to ensure that this is the budgeted amount, and we should have some very valid reason why we would exceed the budgeted amount. Uh, number two, coordinate distribution of board and committee minutes with action items among staff to ensure appropriate staff action. Right now, we don't do that. And Julianne, this is actually her idea, I think it's a brilliant one, um, to be able to take the action items that you all talk about, reference them over to a staff member as a to-do list, so to speak, so that we're more effectively managing the will of the board. Number three, uh, it does not look to me like we went after many smaller grants prior to me coming on board. I really don't see any detail from that. So we need to really research, uh, I'm sorry, identify, research and produce one external grant application each month to augment our local funding. Why shouldn't we be seeking outside funding in order to, you know, meet our overall goals and objectives? Um, number four, this is probably the big one, complete major projects as identified by the board. And as I indicated, we have a number of irons in the fire. And I'd say that at least sixty percent of my time now is just on project management tasks, one thing or another. Um, so hopefully we can get all of those completed and try to minimize costs. Uh, number five, working to develop leadership potential of existing staff members as well as potential new staff members. Um, one of my thoughts is that I would like to flatten the organization as much as possible. If you look at Apple as an example of a successful flat company, um, they empower their managers to make many decisions. And part of this, if you've been to the Marita committee meetings, has been to empower Wendy to make decisions and manage that as an enterprise component. It's a goal that I'd like to continue to pursue, um, as well as as we transition into other areas, um, continue that flattening process. So that's as I've outlined them. For if you guys want to go dagger-dagging on, or we could go, I can, I can dodge more.
Actually, I think, Zeke, they, they sound great. And being able to, um, develop that leadership potential, it's, it's critical to have those goals and action steps clearly delineated, or there's no performance measures for people. So I think it's making a lot of sense. Um, my only question of all of it was, when you, number three, you said staff will identify research and produce. So are you gonna manage who is responsible at various times for...
Yes. And I'll tell you right now, I've got two different staff members that, prior to me coming on board, have never written grants, and never been given the opportunity to write grants. And I think that's, if you, if you look at what, there are motivators and there are compensators, right? Those are two very different things. A compensator is me paying you to want what I want. And that really is a poor means to motivate a staff to do something. A motivator, or examples of those are things like an opportunity to grow, an opportunity to have responsibility. Um, those are the things that really build a cohesive team and build a strong organization. So to hand a staff member an opportunity to author a grant, especially if they offer a successful one, is a victory that they get, is a, a feeling unlike anything else they'll have as just a lone staff member. So again, two staff members now are writing grants they never would've had an opportunity to do, um, if we weren't going through this flattening process. And I'm anxious to see how successful they are at the end. If nothing else, they will gain experience on administrative level in authoring a grant. And even if they're unsuccessful in this application, guess what? There's another application period coming up sometime in the near future, and we'll just keep resubmitting until we...
And you're able to coach them on the grant writing skills, aspects, features.
Yes. And there's, there's actually one of our staff members that, um, he's worked very hard to produce one. And I'm thus far very pleased with the outcome.
Big thumbs up for me.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the identified management goals for 2014.
Second.
Other discussion?
Looks good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Actually, I guess I do. On the back, on the bottom of this is...
Yeah.
It's adopted by state SB five-six-six-one-four.
Borrowed my last board report and forgot to delete this line. So I'll just add another management goal, which is, Zeke, you need to read your own work. I apologize.
Self-motivator, look at that.
Yep.
Item number six, I'm sorry, item number four, consider a motion to approve election inspectors. Motion by Lino.
Second.
I have a question. Do we need this seven or eight poll workers for our elections that show up, two hundred people?
That's required.
That's required. It's all required by statute.
Required by statute, regardless of how many people you have in the district.
One person shows up, you still have to have it.
Wisconsin rules, John.
Bring that up with Mr. Walker when he's in.
I will. I mean, I understand it, but it's, it's, you know, they're all sitting there talking to each other all day.
It's...
And eating dough.
Nice cake, John.
It is.
I know it's a nice cake.
John, you'll be there one day. You'll be sitting there running the bowl and trying to get the coffee.
I am, I'm doing all the work I'm doing.
You gotta be a little further along in the retirement process.
One foot in the grave?
Uh, just, just a minor item on this. I noticed you have Dwight and Mary Jo at one address, and there's Fred Landstrom at the same address, is it?
Whoa, wait a minute.
It just reached out and bit me, I'm sorry.
Evens are on the water side, ads are on, wait. He should be, ads should be on the water side.
So we'll see, nine-five?
No, the Andersons then would be.
Nine-five.
Nine-five. Can we approve this as amended?
Yeah, subject to correction of any address.
Yeah, that's right. Ads are on water side, evens are on...
I make a motion to approve. There's actually a motion ready?
We need a second.
Oh, I'll, I'll second it.
Jump right in, right after we...
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Reporting county activities from county supervisor Dave Lino. I do have something this month, a couple of them. And they have to do with Sister Bay Liberty Grove. But before I get to that, um, at the February twenty-fifth meeting, um, Door County Administrator Maureen, um, appointed a new EMS director to replace the director of the left, Dan Williams. Dan Williams was a long-term employee for us in the past. And he's worked in county EMS for, on and off, for a number of years. He is a state-level, um, individual who's widely regarded as one of the best EMS consultants in the state of Wisconsin. So the county was happy to get him back in the EMS director role. Transfer of non-budgeted funds, Door County unanticipated retirements. There was thirteen or fourteen retirements that took place right at the end of the year. It wasn't necessarily unexpected. The county expected when Act Ten went into full effect within Door County and compensation plan changes were made, that a number of employees would probably choose to retire, um, instead of continuing on in their current roles, which, which was fine. They were eligible to retire, and that's what they chose to do. However, there is still, from the existing compensation plans that were in place, under some of the bargaining units, there is still individuals that have accrued a fair amount of money that they can take out at, basically fifty percent payout, um, when they choose to retire. So for these twelve or thirteen individuals, I believe we had to, I don't have the number right in front of me, so I'll quote this, but I think we had to transfer about two-hundred-and-forty or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from a payroll contingency fund back into each of those departments or those individuals worked to replenish their budget for 2014 as these individuals were paid out. Because you can't budget for somebody retiring, you don't know when they're gonna retire.
Dave, do you recall the total amount of overhead, future retirees, something millions or something like that?
It's like, again, don't quote, I can, I can get this information for you, but it's in excess of two and a half to three million dollars potential.
Right.
Now, that doesn't mean you're gonna ultimately end up paying that out. It depends on whether in fact they retire, if they have enough years, when they do retire, if they've chose to change, uh, plans, for instance, PTO plans, they can shift things. So there's a number of factors involved, but that's a potential liability that's out there. And we do have payroll contingency reserves in place for when things like this happen. But you can't plan within a budget, a department budget, that, that department that doesn't know when the budget is put in place in November, that somebody's gonna choose to retire in March. Because they don't typically tell you very far in advance. So if that individual retires in March, and you have to do a thirty thousand dollar payout, that comes out of that department's budget, okay? So what this kind of action does is replenish that budget money for that, for that department.
The lesson learned here is, we don't have a contingency budget within the village, and we're faced with probably some of the same situations in the future. We have some guarantee, we, we, when I was on personnel, we were talking about, what was it, that we, uh, paid in absence or in lieu of work or whatever, that they get a crew, they get a crew up for two-hundred-and-fifty days or two-hundred-and-sixty days of comp time.
But that doesn't get paid out unless they use it.
But it gets paid out at retirement. If they, if they retire, and then it gets paid out as a comp, a comp time type thing, because that was one of our things, we could potentially budget and be twenty thousand dollars.
The bigger, the bigger item that we have is, um, two, two longstanding employees have, were grandfathered in under an old sick leave policy. They can be paid, and they had accrued enormous amounts of sick leave. They are no longer accruing any until they get back down to the two-hundred-and-forty that, that everybody else has. But, um, they would have to be paid out at fifty percent of that sick leave at whatever their current rate of pay is.
I believe they're the only, only ones we have any liability on, correct? Well, yeah. Um, to John's point, um, this is something we'll discuss in admin and comp, controlling use of comp time. And accrual of comp time is something we're gonna have to take a look at.
And there's also accrual of vacation. We had that situation.
And that's, yeah, that's admin and comp also.
Well, that's where the comp time comes in, is they start adding it as vacation, and they pay them off their vacation time due when they retire, you know?
We'll be looking at those sorts of things in the admin and comp.
Third item was simulcast radio system. This has to do with Sister Bay Liberty Grove. Chris Heck, who is a great grant writer, if you recall, got a FEMA grant a year ago for one-point-one-two-five million dollars for the Sister Bay Liberty Grove Fire Department to help put in place throughout the county simulcast paging. And what I mean by that is, here's what happens. Right now, let's say there's thirteen towers in Door County that, if you are an EMS responder, um, the tower that you, that you live closest to, if there's a page, let's say for Jacksonport, there's two towers in the Jacksonport-Bailey's Harbor area. The system kind of determines electronically what tower that signal's gonna be sent off of. If you're a little far away or down in a valley, you may never get the page, okay? But that happened. And maybe there's a tower that's actually closer to you, but the system chose not to, to broadcast the, the page over that system. What the grant allows the county to do is take all the EMS paging and simulcast them on all thirteen towers simultaneously. So no matter where you are in the system, whether you're between two towers or not, um, you'll receive the page. And that's the idea behind it. So that's what's being done for the one-point-one-two-five million. So that's what's being done for the 1.125 million. The bids came in and were awarded to Baycom Electrics of Green Bay, I believe, last month. But Baycom came back and asked the county, there's three other broadcast systems that are also used, police, fire, ambulance, et cetera, that could also be simulcast at the same time. And they would do the additional three for an additional $750,000. So the board did agree, IS committee evaluated it, finance evaluated, everybody agreed, and it's sent to the county board and they approved it, to transfer $750,000 from the unassigned fund balance to this project to make it basically a $2,125,000 project to do simulcast them on all four frequencies simultaneously. And it should eliminate a lot of issues, response issues. But it all started with Chris Heck and writing grants and giving that, that grant money to have this done. This is a tremendous thing to have done throughout the whole county. And last but not least, this also was brought up last year. If you would like, and Washington Island chose to do this, and I think it was Union and Gardner, or Gardner chose to do this, you can have an ordinance changed by the county so you can use all-terrain vehicles on your village streets, city streets, whatever, township streets. You have to put up certain signage, et cetera. So the town of Washington, i.e. Washington Island, came and approached the board to do that last month, so that was also approved. I have heard there was some discussion about doing this also in Liberty Grove. So that may have come up here. And that's all I got. Seven hundred, up to 750,000.
We had a discussion about that. Was that ever passed within Sister Bay or?
I thought we did. Nutility vehicles, low-speed vehicles up to 35 miles an hour, I thought we followed the county.
It wasn't all terrain vehicles.
No, right.
This had to do with, like, people movers.
It wasn't a four-wheeler, but if you wanted to do a Gibraltar grill type thing, or like an airport cart type thing, that's what they were talking about.
This is more intended for somebody, it's winter and you got ice out of, out of the bay and you want to have back and forth your fish hanny, you want to park over in the Marina long-term parking lot, because there's lots of trailers, and you take your four-wheeler and head down the main drag and out into the ice. That's what allowed you to do. So this came up in Southern Door, where they have a lot of ice shanties out in the ice, and there'd be hundreds of trailers parked up and down the roads. They're trying to get into parking lots that were close by, and it wasn't possible. So this allowed them to have off-street parking some distance from the shoreline entry points that allowed them to use the vehicles on main roads. So same thing, same thing that would Washington Island.
But it makes a lot of sense. All those, all those ATVs have taillights and headlights and stuff like that, so they are street compliant.
The biggest issue becomes, in order to do this, you have to have certain signage that complies with the state requirements, marking the roads that the ATVs can actually operate on.
Are there helmet laws for ancient?
I think, I think eye protection, but not necessarily helmets. They recommend it, but I don't know that it's, you must wear one.
I don't, I don't think it's required. Just like motorcycles, unfortunately.
Got to watch this fish.
Those have law in Wisconsin Motor Law.
They used to in the repealing.
Yeah, just eye protection. What it goes off there long.
Review of financial statements, consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills. I'll make a motion to approve the monthly bills in the amount of $1,712,321.7.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
The, a little over 1.5 million of that amount is money that we had to pay to the county and the schools after the mid-year tax collection. So you're down to about $211,400 is the amount that you're really spending here.
That makes it seem so much better.
We had the same thing last.
Yeah, I was going to say, our local buying practices aren't working.
Is there any questions about the village financials that Juliana has in here?
By the way, which are we doing first?
Well, on the, on the Zoom, the village financials are there first.
Okay, oh, okay.
I'm not sure.
Just.
The twelve-month general ledger is there.
Yeah, these, the audit has been completed and I, and all of the adjusting entries have been entered here. So these are going to be the final numbers unless they find something else before they print the audited statements. And we should, we will probably see Mike Kenechny at the May board meeting to discuss this. Or to discuss their, their reports. But anyway, I thought you might like to see the numbers.
Thank you.
Page four of the general fund for twelve months. Building inspection services, I think at one time, you know, we didn't receive as much from those types of fees, but then we, the village might capture more of those revenues.
Yeah, the fees, the fees are shown on page one, under licenses and permits. We took in $16,000, close to 300.
And paid out that $8,000.
Eighty-eight hundred. And it's, but we're supposed to be paying out 90%, but there was.
There was a.
The first building inspector that we had after.
Independent inspection.
Independent inspection. He wanted to handle the.
Funds.
The funding differently. He was keeping the money and then paying us back the 10%. And when our auditor saw that, he was not pleased, and so we had to change it mid-year. That's why this didn't come out right.
Okay.
We are still engaged with the state for commercial inspections, and that money is retained locally.
Oh, that would also change, yes, there isn't going to be a, a 10%, a 90% difference.
It's 100% retained locally.
Any other questions on the financials? Is there anything else you'd like to say about them, Juliana?
The unassigned fund balance has dropped about a percentage and a half points below our 25% goal.
Below our target.
Yeah, based on, based on these numbers here.
And that's audited numbers?
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions on the financials, everybody? Let's move to the expenditures. Under village, we'll start with the village.
I have a question on page 45. And what's the, under Pinker Law Firm on Pavilion, $539?
Okay, I don't have that page numbering in front of me.
I'm sorry, that's the Zoom page, it's page seven of village bills.
Thank you. Pinker Law Firm, which one?
Uh, you got Pavilion for $539. What are we paying them for the Pavilion for?
That was review of the contract.
So you're not to write the contract, just to review it, or to?
Yeah, that was review of it. It was a contract that was developed by Dimension Four, and I wanted it going through with a fine-tooth comb before we signed off on it.
Then page eight of the village report, page 46 on Zoom. You got septic maintenance.
That's a fun one, yeah.
$2,054, and I have two questions on that. One, we don't have any septics, and number two, why isn't it utilities?
Called, it's winter and frozen by.
These are, yeah, frozen laterals. When we hear a gurgling noise in the toilets of the admin building, or Pam can speak of this because she's doing a little bit at the post office, too. Pam's stories are worse than ours.
When you flush and it goes up instead of down.
Henderson Park's only a.
Bucket, you need a bucket. 10 bucks for a bucket. How about that? Let's put that in the budget.
It, it was an unanticipated expense, and it is on the village because those are village properties, not utilities properties. Just like when we have a customer, if their lateral freezes, that's up to them to take care of.
So is it, do they just do a rotor ruder on it, like a plumbing? Do we have that capability at our utilities department? We do all of our own pipes and stuff like that? Could, could we have called our utilities?
John, I, I asked a question, and the answer was no, because apparently they just don't have the equipment.
We had three days with no capability at the post office. It's not fun going to Al's or going, can I help you with stamps?
Hey, man, that's what they sell those porta potties for.
75 bucks, yeah.
It's a lot better than 75 or 2,500. I have one more, my favorite subject, and that's page 47.
I knew, I knew what this is.
What, what pages are showing?
That's page nine of the village. Wisconsin Public Service. We got Doc, J Doc, of 750, and the, the Doc of $1,737 for electrical.
I can guess that's bubblers.
Is it bubblers or is it lights?
It's probably both, yeah.
Okay, I, I think you've answered my question for me, because I bring this up all the time. I think we need to turn those off.
The bubblers?
No, not the bubblers. We can have a separate service on the bubblers. Trouble is, we, we light up all of our lighthouses on the Marina to keep the bubblers running, because they come off of that service. For $2,000, you know, for doing that, it'd probably pay us to buy a new switch or have Action Electric come down and put a separate switch in. And we run a separate electrical line for bubblers and keep that expense down instead of lighting, lighting lighthouses for the ice.
Isn't that much difference, though? Because the sports complex is 1,400.
Yeah, that's, they have outside lights and overhead lights and stuff like that.
I guess, you know, if you think about.
This is lighthouse lights.
The ice skating? Yeah, right.
And that's also inside lighting as well. They've got to burn away more in terms of lighting up there. You're talking about the little lighthouse.
Yeah, they're talking about the Marina pedestal, the lighthouse pedestal. They're lit up, okay.
What's those bulbs on that?
Well, they, during the winter, they were always fairly expensive. Over the last several years, Steve has turned off whatever he could, but as John said, there was a couple of sections he had to leave on in order to power it up.
Because we're plugging in the bubblers to them.
Okay, I, I have a thought. I don't know if it's, rather than having that expenditure, are we just going to take the bulb? Yeah.
Well, we've discussed that, too, but I don't know if it's, you know, I guess.
It's very difficult to do.
It's probably more difficult.
It's not simple.
You know, if you're spending $2,000 a month for an electrical bill to run bubblers, it might cost, if it costs you $500 to have Action go in there and put a separate circuit to it.
Maybe. It'd be worth looking into. I know, I think, we looked at something else, and because of the length of the line, you got to go to a much thicker wire, and that stuff is really expensive when you're talking about a run of several hundred feet.
I mean, a couple of years ago, we had an estimate by them.
It was like $7,000.
Seven grand to run a.
Believe it or not, for one extra, like that new doc, it was like $7,000 to get a 30 or 50 amp, one 30 or 50 amp circuit out there, because it's, whatever that is, 600 feet to the.
Is there a?
Another option for LEDs.
Just another, do it.
I said another option, just looking to replacing the bulbs with LEDs.
Well, there's that. I'm thinking, can we go out and put a switch on that pedestal, to the bulb itself? Then you cut into the pedestal and put a switch on there, and just, they're switched off. It's taking the bulb out is a lot of work.
Yeah, but turning the switch off is not hard.
Yeah, well, that's it. You hit the switch, now they're all off.
Right, but I don't, I don't think it's necessary the bulbs are using up that much electricity.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably not.
You're running the pumps, off them. Yes, the guests are lit up and on, but it's the pumps off of them that are running it.
It may be $100 of the lights, I bet. $1,600 is the bubbler.
You look at, at the TKA, we're running at least four, I think more than that of the high wattage bulbs upon the poles and then inside the building, heating the building, and that's $1,400 compared to, you know, the horsepower we're putting on those bulbs.
Anyway, it's spet fee, because it just lights it.
How many, how many pumps are we running there, do you know?
We had as many as 10, but I thought a couple.
I think we're close to that. It was 10 or 12. We ended up having to put on bubble the new.
I think they're either 4,500 or 5,500, 500 gallon per hour pumps.
Yeah, I think they're like either half or one horse. I mean, they're a good-sized pump.
I'm equipped to installing pods. So a 4,500 gallon per hour pump runs about $95 a month to run 24/7.
There you go.
So there you go.
10 pumps would be $8,000.
Do the lights have to stay on for safety reasons, or docks are closed? No, no, they don't.
Anybody else on village?
Just a quick question on the propane. I assume that's because Milton.
So we really had to pay five something a gallon with?
Did we pay some more?
We had an issue with actually getting propane, and I made a, I made a judgment call, given the, I guess, number one, my inexperience with cold weather, and number two, given that they were issuing, you know, we're not going to honor contract, you know, force majeure letters. I thought we would be remiss not to have propane in the event that we had some elderly people and households that actually ran out of propane to have the library and the fire station filled up. And those were hefty bills to have them filled up.
That was last month, so that was like $20,000 last month.
There's another one here for the li, they started to fill the library again.
Yeah, but it was only $1,000 or something like that compared to the $20,000.
The library pays for their propane.
Yeah, I think, I think that state of emergency's been lifted, that hopefully they've reduced the cost per gallon.
So we're back to our contract price with Milton.
They're honoring it.
Now they're honoring the contract, yeah.
Thing under village, they got a utility.
So page three under utilities, 50 on your Zoom. Midwest Meter, Inc., there is an Orion's meter for 50 and 3/4 for $8,872.
The company that we buy our water meters from used to be called Badger Meter. They've changed their name to Midwest Meter. And these Orion meters are the, are actually meter heads that provide a transmitter so that there doesn't have to be a wire to, to the outside to read the meter. They can be read by a handheld.
So are these going in homes and commercial places, or is this?
These are going, these are going in everywhere, but we're doing a certain number every year, and this started two years ago.
So these are replacement meter heads for the.
Every 10 years, I was told.
For the wireless transmission. So it's basically so the guy doesn't have to get out and re. They're switching, they're switching.
They can do it as they drive by.
It provides, it provides other, other things besides ease of reading. We can actually look online and get a graph of somebody's usage and figure out at what time there was a sudden increase, you know, if there's a leak or something like that.
We have the leaks now.
And not only that, I, I, I came around to it, but at first I wasn't all about it. But Badger stopped carrying the replacement parts for the older ones. So inevitably, we were going to have to switch over.
I don't, I don't know how much anybody's ever talked to you guys about metering, but this is the whole thing, because I get excited about when it comes to utilities. So in running, in running an electric utility, our co-op back in Fremont sent us an old meter box. And this thing had over a million kilowatt hours run through it, and it was just worn out. And they'd done it as a display. And so on one side, you had a compact fluorescent, on the other side, you had an incandescent bulb. They put a switch between them. You plug the thing into 110 volt outlet. You could see the meter spin, because they had the old analog dial in it. And if you were on incandescent, the thing was spinning around pretty good. You flipped it over to compact fluorescent, it slowed down a lot. So we got curious and put an LED bulb in it, and the meter stopped spinning. The lesson was, put the meters in, because they don't pick up super low flow rates.
Or to change our bulbs to LED.
Yeah, well, that's it. And it's the same with water meters as well. The, the old gear-style meters, after about 10 years, you've got a significant amount of water slipping by them. You really should replace them.
So hang out on those old meters as long as you can. So hang out on those old meters as long as you can.
Yeah, they just replaced my...
Tell me that last week.
I had a Ford X four who consistently used a thousand gallons.
Yeah, Bob Lane, he was my house.
And that was because that was the minimum, but our system would flag his meter what's spinning. You're a forty-year-old meter.
Did you have that, yeah, maybe you up?
Anything else on the financials?
Utility sync?
Scott, in the laundry? Anything else on the utility financials?
No, I'm good.
Any other discussion on financials? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Senator motion to adopt resolution amendment oh three one eight one four to the twenty fourteen budget.
This is one that came out of finance and is going to be used to pay for the pavilion project, the overs, it was discussed in a previous meeting.
So moved. Second?
Discussion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried. Discussion regarding updates to the Village Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, I'm, you know, getting a latecomer to the cycle, and you all have a lot of projects that are taking place, and I would be remiss if I didn't try to go after every opportunity out there that I had to tap into some state of federal money. So I began a conversation with Mr. Claude's favorite consulting firm. They, they were the ones that made me aware of this, and we pursued a conversation with a meeting at DNR's office in Green Bay, went through the process of a multi-grant, single application, which...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Are eight and nine not intertwined?
And that's, that's why I'm laying this out. In going through the grant application guidelines, which will come into number nine, we uncovered that our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, which is required for grant submission, is out of date, and if you read through this, it's, it's enlightening, because it shows how far we've come, right? And if you look at the map, you'll see that the Johnston property isn't included as being part of the waterfront park, and there are a number of other properties that will be either disposed of, or are legitimately disposed of, or, yeah, that changed in some way. So what I'm asking you all for tonight, and considering this in the context of number nine, which is to come, is the ability to contract with JJR for a not-to-exceed amount of two thousand dollars to conduct the update to the corp.
Okay, so in order to do the update to the master plan, we have to do the update to master plan in order to submit the grant?
Yes.
What's the value of the grant that we're talking about potential?
I've asked some questions that are broad-based, and there are some items that you all had excluded from the beach project, but it's fifty percent of the total value of the project, including the engineering work, so we're talking in the ballpark of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on what comes back once we've submitted the grant application.
So whether we have somebody else write the grant application, or whether you did it yourself, you still have to have this updated?
That's correct.
This is, the two thousand dollars you're talking about is just to update the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir.
So you can write the grant, that has nothing to do with what the grant writing process is going to be.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
And you have to have a engineer update to comprehensive plan?
You don't have to have an engineer to update it, however, you need to have some really cool software, which we don't have, and you need to have...
Some really buddy, some really cool people to operate that really cool software.
There's that, and time out...
Really cool things to put in there.
Are they going to do it in a timely fashion?
Yes, that's the whole point of doing this, is that you guys have to hit this by May one, and I'll have that in the adendum, is that if they don't have all this ready for submission?
We don't pay them.
I'm not paying them. That's the whole point of doing this.
Have they given you a firm bid price on what it would cost of this, or is this...
On the corp, it's a not-to-exceed of two thousand. The gentleman who started this process with me, I hate to even tell you this, John, he has gone on vacation this week, with the understanding that he knows as soon as he gets back, he is jumping on this.
Yeah, it wouldn't be Bill Bros, would it?
No, it's not Bill Bros. As a matter of fact, I've had one phone call with Bill Bros.
The people who write their grants are a different segment of folks. Can you refresh our memories, of some of us who have those memories? We had JJR do a couple of previous grants?
Yes.
What was the results of writing those grants?
You received approximately two million dollars in two grants from JJR's work.
Right, they wrote it to get the grant for the helms, and they wrote to get the grant for Johnson.
Johnson. I did bring along with me a copy of the twenty-ten grant, this is the amount of work that we're talking about being done between now and...
May first.
May first. And if I weren't already working on one that's half the size, I'd tell you that I'd go about and write it, but that one also has a deadline. So same, same project going after a different one for the beach, so splitting it, it's not nearly as generous.
So when we get a grant application in?
Yes, sir.
And get it written, it's in a certain funding cycle?
Yes, sir.
What's the funding cycle for the grant you'd like JJR to get involved with?
May one deadline, we will know if we've been funded or not by approximately September. They'll be able to issue us a notice of award, hopefully in the October timeframe. What we will need to do is to issue a letter of intent to a contractor saying that we're going to award you this contract contingent upon funds availability and grant awarding.
Okay, so, because I know you can't necessarily award things before you get the grant.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. So in that same period of time, we're going to be rebidding the beach?
Yes.
And trying to get bids back?
It'll rebid the summer for the...
And the intention then would be to have, by this grant cycle period of time, before, prior to being notified, we would have that discussion, that bidding?
Yes.
That potential award ready to go?
Yes.
And we would sign a letter of intent with a potential vendor?
Contractor, yes.
Contract that period of time, so that if we were awarded the grant, then in fact we could receive the grant.
Yes.
But it's also potential, we're not going to get the grant, but we still need to go through the process anyway, if we're going to do the beach?
The...
With or without the grant?
Yeah, we have to do the contract and the process separately.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And we would go ahead with the project if we didn't get the grant?
So they're potentially...
You don't need to ask that.
I'm just curious, do we have the money?
Well, I think if we took, if you go back to...
If we do not get this grant, it will be very hard for us to do the project, that's...
No, that's fine, I mean...
Right, if you go back to our discussion at Finance, there was a number of things that we went through and said we would do or not do, and that was one of them. Now, that hasn't all been forwarded yet, because we haven't finalized it in Finance.
Gotcha. I have some memories, I don't have that one. Sorry, I think I was at that meeting, but...
It was a closed session, you had it closed off.
If you were to call, I know Shane recalls this, there was a...
Wait.
You want to tell me what that was?
Listen, it's got your signature. There was a list of items we were going through for capital projects, and we were trying to decide how they could be funded, how things could be shifted, what would be done with them. And this is just one of those items that was on the list?
Yep.
And there was a designation after how it would be done. Subsequent to that meeting, Zeke has come up with potentially this grant issue.
Gotcha.
So if we were to get the grant issued, what we had penciled in there is a possibility for doing that wouldn't be necessary.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
Well, the other shoe that has to fall...
No soup kitchen.
The other shoe, I have no problem with two thousand dollars to have them, or up to two thousand dollars to have them revise our comprehensive plans, so we can use it in future grants. I don't have a problem with that. The next shoe that's going to fall is, oh, I want thirty thousand dollars to write this grant.
And it might very well be that.
Actually, that's the shoe I'm worried about.
Juliana, actually Juliana, to her credit, worked incredibly hard to come up with a number, and we learned a lot of fun things today, which I will get into in this meeting.
I had to pull all the JJR files going back to two thousand and six, to find out how much we spent on grant assistance to get that to, over two million.
Yeah, and memory serves, it was about twenty-five thousand dollars, but that will split over two grants, okay? So depending on how this shakes out, assuming that we have a good chunk of this work already completed, I would hope that we'd be able to handle this inside of a reasonable amount of money.
So if, you said before, if we received a grant, you'd include the engineering within?
Yes.
Does that include bid writing specs?
It includes all the engineering work, which is fantastic, everything we've done up to date. It doesn't include the grant writing. At that point, I think we're, you know...
Yeah, so he's going to give us three quarters of a million dollars, you pay the ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
At that point, glad...
I'll take that every day.
Yeah, all day long.
So we don't know what it's going to be yet, because this gentleman's out of town?
Yes, sir.
So, once we get this done, let's say we pay the ten gees to do this?
It'll be twenty.
Okay, we pay the, we pay the X amount of dollars.
Twenty.
Okay, so we pay the twenty thousand to do this, we'll be able to use it next year under your guidance, as far as just changing the dates around, maybe changing a couple of words and...
That, that depends on if you guys want to sit around a lot of beach for another year, okay? These things don't work retroactively.
Yeah.
So we potentially could go back into another funding cycle, to be very blunt about your question, and depending on how these bids come back, along with the other bids that we have working, that may be something that comes up for conversation. I know you all had a very tight line, or tight timeline planned, that the pavilion was going to go in, the beach was going to go in, the underground utility rail was going to happen, DOT was going to do its project, and everything looked very concise, it was very well planned. The unfortunate part is DOT changed what they were going to do, bids came in, higher on some items than what we thought they were, and so now we're back at the table trying to figure out how to juggle all this around and make it all happen.
The, the next shoe to fall on JJR is, I'll write your, your new grant, or to do that, but you did, as you said, we got to rewrite the bid. Now JJR's going to come back there and say, well, geez, to rewrite that bid that I did wrong the first time is going to cost you another ten thousand dollars.
Mr. Cuffin had written a letter to JJR, I have not received the full reply from JJR on redoing the bid. I just received a document back from them that did not include any numbers in it, and as soon as Mr. Cuffin gets back from his trip, you know, I'll have that conversation.
We have already suspended or denied payment on...
All JJR stuff until we get this rectified.
Eight thousand fifty-six dollars because of that, so that's in the works.
Could we, or could we entertain the idea of saying, while we want it, we're okay with the two thousand dollars, we're concerned with what the grant was, might cost, we went back and looked at our analysis, and we would have a budget of up to ten thousand dollars for the grants?
It will not exceed this amount, I guess, what I'm, we're bleeding over item nine, you just have a discussion on item nine?
Yeah, I, that's what I mentioned, we're pretty much talking about eight and nine.
I, I want a not-to-exceed amount, and without having that number in hand of, we're not going to exceed this amount, I don't know what it is to tell you.
Oh, I know, but what I'm saying is, before you commit to spending the two thousand, if they're going to say it's going to be thirty thousand, then maybe we're all right with that, but if we're not, is to say, we'll do the two, only if we know, you know, this is, this is get you in the game, but then you got to do...
Yeah, no, pay, I say, no, I'd spend thirty if it was a guarantee we'd get the grant. In other words, we're going to charge you thirty, but only if our work is successfully submitted and you're funded.
I know, but they can't give you that, yeah.
Well, why can't they? Why would they write it that way? Why would we say if, if you successfully, you can't...
They're, they're on grant writing, we're going to do it on a funding basis?
Yeah.
But usually the fee goes a lot higher, right? So it's like ten percent of the value of the grant.
Well, but here's the question, I mean, to Pat, to what Pat is suggesting, you know, if we, to be, no more than ten thousand or whatever the number is, what's our exit strategy? They go, my bad, sorry, you know, we're partway into it, our timeline is tough, and that we have, what's our recourse if, if they don't follow through?
Are you talking about finishing the grant on time?
Not only that, but getting it, you know, not only finishing it on time, but writing it to the right parameters to be awarded the grant.
Well, that's difficult, because, let me give you an example that happened last year, the year before. Don't forget, Bob wrote a grant for, it was in excess of a million dollars or something. It was submitted, we were ranked number one, and they notified us, you're number one for funding, but they gave it to number two, three, four, and five, and we got nothing.
Right.
Now, that's not JJR's fault, they wrote a great submission, and it was rated, we were rated number one. So politics got involved there somewhere.
Yeah.
And four other people got funded and we didn't.
Right.
One of the things is, grants, I believe, is over a half a million dollars in funding, go for the assembly for sign-off in their committees, so if we rank high in the funding process, we will then need to press our representatives to fully represent us and okay those grants. I don't know if that's what happened last time, I don't know, that was part of the discussion that I had down at DNR.
Pat's suggestion was to use the two thousand dollars for updating the corp, is it called?
Yeah.
As leverage.
Right. We'll give you that, but just...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's what we want to use, I, I think it's worth getting that done anyway, because any other...
Grants.
Grants that you might, that Zeke might want to write later on, will depend on having that updated.
And that's what I was going to bring up.
Yeah.
I will say, I would want, unless there's some requirement, and I'm unaware at this point, I don't want to do it for longer than five years, so if in five years we're not coming back down for another two thousand dollars for an update, let's recognize that we're completing a substantial portion of our project, or projects, and that it will largely be maintenance-based, right, from this point on. I don't know what other amenities we may want to include, but I can imagine we've pretty much bought up the waterfront, I don't know where else we're going to expand to.
Would it be worth asking them the question if they would be willing to, is there an amount of money they'd be willing to accept based on successful?
I can have that conversation.
You know, if it's a twenty, twenty thousand dollar process, but we'll take fifty if we're successful, but nothing if you are not successful?
Yeah, make it performance-based or grant-based.
Right. I can have that conversation, that's certainly going to be part of the negotiation.
The only...
Standard fare is they get paid for going. I like that, that process.
Or, or it's, you know, half of what, half of what the normal bill is, and a percentage of the successful grant, you know?
Turn it to a broad negotiation.
Yeah, I don't mind, you know, giving a percent, and my, going back to saying that we'll, we'll approve up to a certain amount, you know, if I was JJR and says, well, we've approved up to fifteen thousand dollars for writing a grant, I'm going to send you a bill for fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Well, that's why I said ten, if we've said we paid twenty-five on two, then fine, start at low at ten, thinking that it'll probably be twelve and a half or fifteen by that time, if that was oh six and now we're twenty-fourteen, but...
The bills for grant assistance, grant writing assistance, since I just looked at every single one of them today, are very detailed, and they come in in small amounts, hourly rate, you know, there's some, there was one as low as sixty-nine fifty, and then there might be another one that was fifteen hundred for another period of time, and they give you the period of time, who did the work, they're very specific. It's not going to be one final bill of fourteen thousand dollars.
It's on a time and material basis.
Yeah.
What they've done, so...
That's what it is.
To your, to your points, our goal is to have a successful grant application that's funded, and I can certainly get into it with them, but because time is of the essence on this, and I need, I need them to move on this, if we're going to move ahead with it, I need a dollar amount that you all are comfortable in spending. We know that if you took the two grants that were successfully funded and split it down the middle, you're talking about twelve-five, was what was basically paid for each grant submission.
Ten, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Right. No, no, no.
Between... Between...
I'd be 13.
I guess, I guess my own feeling is, is I'm very uneasy, okay, because you're open-ended, and you're playing in the lottery, as to use your point before on grants, to do it. And 12.5 doesn't bother me one bit. 20 does, okay? And 25 even more, and 30, and I see that all the time with JJR in particular, but other ones where it's escalating cost. You know, I mean, it's, we just did a grant for $40,000 for the economic development, and with the idea that, oh, we're gonna get, you know, $20,000 of that back, didn't get it. Okay, so now we're, you know, 20 additional, $20,000 additional dollars in the hole, and it just keeps escalating.
Again, look, there's another one I'd love to chase down for the next round of economic development they have, and I'm talking about that in the context of grants in general that we're speaking of here. We could go one of a couple of routes with this, right? We can continue to pay consultants on the basis that we're paying consultants, or I can go hire a staff member that writes. But until these projects get cleared out, and the other things we're working on get cleared out, our ability to really spend a significant amount of time doing this is limited. Some of these grant applications are a couple of pages, they're easy, we can zip them out, they're not really a problem. Or they're a four-page paper. The ones that are large money grants, much more problematic. And given that we're gonna come to an end of these projects in very short order, I think we'd be remiss to go on and hire a staff member, because then what are we gonna have them do once the projects are done? So we're looking at the short-term, short-term solution.
And they require contacts with the DNR, with the state, with, they have meetings, you know?
I will tell you, Chris Holber made a point to call me, and she said, "I want you to know, I work for you all. Just because JJR's writing the grant does not mean that they have any kind of preferential treatment. Yes, they have contact with me, yes, they're up there on a regular basis, but that doesn't mean you should hire them unless you have some exigent time reason why you need to hire them." They don't have any pool with DNR above what you do or I do or the board does. And she was very, paid me a phone call just for that reason.
Well, and to speak to one of our earlier amendments in your goals, you're starting to get staff involvement in grant writing, so this is almost a ramp-up period for that. So if we can buy the time for ramping up for the depth of knowledge that's needed for the grant writing.
Right.
How much would you imagine that you would hope to pool in a given year for grant writing?
It would depend on what projects you identify, Shane.
So let's say we write as many possible grants as you're saying, so you're looking maybe four grants a month is what your, your plan is. Oh, you're saying everybody does one.
No, no, no. I'm saying, the office does one. Right now, we might do one every six months. As a ramp-up period for this, my goal is to do one a month. Some of those grants will be very small in funding size, some of those grants are rather large in funding amount. But if we're not going after it, we're not gonna get anything, we don't go after.
I guess I just look at it and saying, if you can find, maybe this is off-topic, and we can talk about this later, but, you know, if you're gonna save, you know, maybe $60,000, $80,000 this year, $50,000 next year, and then it'll be a consistent $20,000 every year, maybe you look into a part-time grant writer.
That's right, I think freelance grant writer.
Or a consultant, a consultant.
Where I cut my teeth, the public administration, will do a grant writing, and I start as an intern. So it's a conversation I have later on. But to bring them up, to some degree, they can work on that off-site if they get the lead-in, you know, they don't necessarily have to be here onsite to do that. We could find somebody down in Madison who's going to school for public administration or political science who just wants to cut their teeth. That's an option that we could pursue at a later date. Again, right now, we're looking at a May 1 deadline to get this thing launched.
The flip side of the discussion on the grant, whether we do a consultant or whatever, the flip side is, as much as I hate to say it, as you know my feeling on JJR, is we're in for a pound already, and we've got so much invested in this project to turn around and not do it, or not go for the grant, you know, for 10 or 15,000 now seems ludicrous.
Drop the bucket.
But it's, the question is, where do you end?
I need to point out again, too, just, I agree with everything John says, I really hate having to use JJR all the time for this stuff. They wrote four grants for us. Three out of four grants were successful, to the tune of over $2 million. The third one, we were number one, we didn't get funded, that wasn't their fault. So it is a different group within JJR that writes these grants, and they've been pretty successful for us. No guarantee, but I think you gotta keep that in mind, too.
In a very short time period, again, they were the ones that identified the corp. And this was in an effort to gain our business in this. They started to review the documents and what it would take for the submission. Number one, can we get it done in this time period? And they feel like, yes, they can. Oh, by the way, if you wanna score this thing, you've gotta do the corp. So you need to have that conversation with your board to see if they're on board with doing that.
So what, what number, where, assuming we agree, and we probably do, $2,000 for doing the corp? What number should we agree on for grant writing?
Originally, when I had had my conversation, I was going off Zeke's head. Now that Julian has had a chance to go through the numbers based on the past, the number that I'd like to go after is 12.5, not to exceed the amount. That's based on previous work that they've done. We could reduce it, and I certainly will be working to reduce it. But without knowing what they're gonna submit or propose, I don't wanna have to call you guys back in for a special meeting and go again.
So do you wait to see what they say before you tell them not to exceed 12.5, or you say...
I'm waiting, yeah, I'm waiting for them to tell me. They're gonna submit, I'm not gonna go say, "Hey, we'll pay you 12.9." Yeah.
So why don't we make a motion into 15,000 for the two of them? You know, 2,000 and, you know, up to $15,000 and call it the combined, I mean...
Two and 13?
Yeah, well, it's two and 13 is, is what our goal is, and that's, you know, we'll say we'll do up to, and that's part of the grant writing, you have to do the corp first, and then you have to do the other one. So let's go with 15 and see where we come out. See if they come back and say, "No, it's gotta be a lot more than this," or it's gonna be...
Is that a motion?
I'd make a motion that we contract with JJR to write the new corp project as, is it called corp?
Corp.
Corp. Project and a grant to be submitted for the beach project by May 1, up to $15,000.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I...
Opposed? Carried?
That covers number nine, what about number two?
Covers eight and nine.
Okay, then I do have a question, sorry. But does JJR have adequate understanding of what the update is gonna be to this plan from guidance or instruction from...
We will most probably, or I will most probably end up providing the information to do the update, and we probably will have to have one porks meeting based around that.
Donna, they've done, they've already done most of this, because they did the pavilion and the beach, and they've already done, yeah, they've already done all the Johnson Park and all the other stuff.
That's right. If you look at the corp, a lot of the geographic information, that's about the US Census Bureau, so it's a matter of getting our files and updating that.
So any substantive change that, from the one that ended in 2015?
Yes, could've got a board.
Okay, is this your motion then, John, that the village board authorizes Jackson to enter into a contract with JJR for updating of the village's sister base comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, and author the DNR grant package for soil and water conservation, creation of recreational trails, and Noel's Nelson stewardship funding to go on to exceed the amount of $15,000?
Did you put May 1, by May 1 in that?
By May 1, yeah.
Otherwise, it's, why are we...
Yeah, 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 yeah. We gotta have it done.
You gotta, you gotta do it.
Emil, are you ready?
Okay.
Item number 10, discussion regarding matters placed in the future agenda referred to committee official or employee.
Should we consider the UTV, who've done the low-speed vehicles, the Liberty Groves talked about that?
Could I get...
A discussion of evaluating whether to have a staff, or what, and then what about the staff grant writing, too?
I'd say, let's bring it up at a later date.
But this grant should be discussed next meeting. We ought to be, the May meeting, we better be, well, it's April, so it's too consecutive.
Yeah.
Talking about.
However, speaking of the April meeting, we'd like to have it on Monday, the 14th, rather than Tuesday, the 15th.
Some of the examples that I've been sent by, I haven't had a chance to...
That's what you told me, the 14th.
Yes, sir. When is my official last day?
It would be the 14th.
14th.
14th in mid-range.
We'll be there.
Well, so it will be, so I'll be at that next 14th. The thing is, there's a number of things that may need to be finished up with this board prior to the new board taking seats, the new board takes seats the 15th.
Yeah, the other issue is, it gives me an opportunity to work with the new board members, and our department has to work with the new board members, to really give them the ins and outs of what goes on. Here's, here's what the facilities look like, here's what properties we own, here's some orientation materials, here's our budget, it gives them a moment after they, they know they've been elected to come in informed.
It'll take them a month just to show them all the downtown stuff that's going on. It'll take you a month to get it.
Yes.
Better than that.
Same about sitting around the board table.
Say, is that 2 o'clock meeting? You'll be wanting the board meetings.
I'll be making up meetings.
Hey, guy, no!
Wait, that was on tape. Anything else?
The last meeting that's mentioned, committee members, did you want to add?
Nope.
Nope.
Moving right along to committees. Administrative has not met, will be shortly. Airshore oversight has not met.
Administrative met their meeting minutes.
No, that's admin column, administrative's...
Coastal byway.
Meeting, minutes of the February 27th meeting are in your packet. I have the new approved and final interpretive plan. It was very similar to what you saw, we changed a little bit of wording, that is about it. And the library will get a copy, not to be distributed, it's a reference-only, so I'll be dropping that off soon this week, hopefully. Worked on some brochure changes. And last but not least, Janelle handed out a picture of our kiosk panels, which we put on a movable object, and it's going to be, this was in the St. Patrick's Day parade, and it's, will be in Mayfest. I'm gonna request that we're able to use it at Marina Fest and Fall Fest, and...
Can, when you do that request, you add on the car show? Sunday of Memorial Day weekend?
Five...
May 25th.
25th. I shall do that. So, anyway, that is it. Any questions?
They did a good job with this.
I think, whoever did the... A gentleman named Chuck Tice did that, those are plastic tubes that he spray painted. And, yeah, I don't know where they got the base.
I don't know, maybe they did a good job.
It looks nice. It looks nice.
DCD?
February 10th meeting minutes, we covered that last month. The last meeting that we had here was the 10th of March, presentation on workforce grant programs from a woman from NWTC. You're all aware that Governor Walker will be here on the 14th. Anybody who wants to come, we're, we're looking at, we're gonna have assigned seating this year, which we haven't had in the past, but we're looking to get...
Isn't that the night of our board meeting?
Yep.
It's the morning of.
Morning, oh, okay.
It's noon, 11:30.
We could invite him to our board meeting.
And, anyway, any names that I can get, anybody who's interested in coming?
I've got, sent an email out right now, it's Mr. Clove, Ms. Gattergood, Mr. Duffy, and perhaps, I know you've got a couple that are going with another organization, I think.
If, if there's room. Dave, do you wanna, do you wanna sit, or you're gonna sit with the board of the county?
I know you said you'd pay for the board members, my wife would like to go, and I'll pay for her, but could she be put in our reservation?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you guys wanna do that, I'll just put it on our reimbursement bill.
Cause she's indicated she'd like to go, I'll pay the, her fee, but just so she has table.
No, I think I've got the full list, I'll go ahead and submit that.
Would you?
Just, just give it to me, I talked to Bill Schudor this afternoon, and he said it'd be, it'd be fine.
I talked to Cindy earlier, and I lined up the ones that had let me know, and you were one of them. But I've got a callback out on the others.
Well, I didn't, I didn't add my wife on that one, she talked about it afterwards, so I'll bring a check in for Janelle.
What date was that on?
That is 14th.
Please add her to my...
Add Stone Harbor. No. That's, it's the annual DCD meeting, it's also the 25th anniversary.
See if I can get off a word for it.
Board meeting that night.
It'd just take a long, long time for them to do that.
Stone Harbor, let's see, what else do I have here? Also did a letter of support for Bay Ship again, a harbor assistant program grant. They want to add new dock walls in bursts one and two, and a partial dock wall in berth three. Of course, this'll help us as far as producing ships and also the winter fleet maintenance. So that's a grant that we're supporting. Home construction, they're finishing up the Kiwanee County House, hopefully getting it done, it's already been sold, and there's one that they're talking about now in Door County for 2014 and 15. This, again, the high school kids are doing this, and they already have a buyer in the house, so, yeah. And I don't know if any of you heard, the city of Sturgeon Bay had put in to become a coast guard city, apparently that was approved. So, excuse me, sometime in May, there'll be a celebration.
Thank you, Chuck. Economic Development.
Development.
Minutes are in your packet. Any questions?
I have a question on the, the, where, did we ever get our final 20 plans from the economic development?
Yes, sir.
Thing, we have 20 power...
Yes, we do, we also have the PowerPoint, and I have a DVD, well, CD of that information. I have given some to some of the property owners of those 20, so they can...
Do you ever thought about maybe showing that CD to the board sometime at one of the future meetings? Because we discussed it as it went along, we never saw their end product.
Okay.
Might be nice to know it.
Okay, I apologize, I thought the board had seen that one.
We'll put that up there under item number nine.
Yep. Oh, not now, but when we get to the, we'll get to the end.
Anything else on, you come, finance?
Well, we had our meeting, and I think the two notable things that weren't covered under closed session were the local purchases, our purchasing policy, which we discussed, and then also the capital projects list of where we're gonna find that money in the future, which is still a work in progress, but we got through a good majority of it. I think it's just finishing it up and trying to figure out how and where and what tree we're gonna pick the money off of, so.
When you find it, let me know.
I think outside of that...
He was thinking so hard that he recessed the February 12th meeting and reconvened it on the 17th, he had to think about it for five days.
It was hard, it was hurting, but, but outside of that, I think most of the other stuff, I, it was all held in closed session, so.
At the moment, yes.
Yes.
Don't everybody run.
Minutes in the packet, we've been down to Sturgeon Bay a couple of times to approve the project Dave talked about, since it stemmed from the sister bay... the project Dave talked about, since it stemmed from the Sister Bay Liberty Grove Fire Board. So, it's good to see their meeting room, and that we are well received, and...
That's the kind of room we're going to build here, right?
Sure. With the special cramp camera angle that you're not in the picture. I don't know if there's anything else really pressing.
Are we buying that truck?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that could be noted in Finance as well, that we approved the switch from the C I P.
Which, by the way, will take three older trucks that are requiring maintenance off the rolls. So, hopefully, there's some cost savings from the sense of maintenance. And now, if we go into this district, fire district, we would appear to be the most well-suited. There's going to be requirements entering into that, and there may be participants whose equipment does not meet the minimum standards. They would have to come up to those standards, whereas I believe we wouldn't have any apparatus that would require any, any other expenditure to enter into that.
To add on to Pat's comments, the three fire trucks that will become redundant as a result of this acquisition will get surplus out, and those monies will be returned back to their respective municipalities. So, there'll be some money put back in our C I P for that.
Do you, do you know approximately when we'll be asked to pay that?
No, but I can ask Chris. You know, that was, it takes them months to build those things. You, you give a commitment, and I, I think we weren't going to take delivery until the fall.
Last time we... Chris's email, that it was, we paid so much in one day, and so much in another point of completion, and so much in the final point of completion.
Last time, we paid the whole amount quite a time in advance.
Well, now that you mention that...
And then we got interest back.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was an incentive, and we did discuss that at the meeting. Now, I'm trying to think. There was...
Four thousand dollars.
Right. If you paid about ninety percent in advance, then you'd get a four thousand dollar discount. And so...
Well, we're ready if, whenever they...
Okay.
We're not going to make four thousand dollars in interest on the money.
Nope, no, no, not in that...
Might as well save it.
And Liberty Grove got their check approved, so they're good, too. They had to get approved. They had to, that was one of the items voted on, but they got it approved. I'll find out, though.
Fire District Exploratory, nothing else has occurred. Historical Society.
No.
Has not met?
Well, they met last week while we were all in County.
Library.
The minutes for February eighteenth are in the packets. We're going to meet again April eighth, and we just have problems with freezing water, propane, and freezing on the road.
Whatever happened with the Milton issue here, that's pretty interesting.
That is interesting, and I don't know, did Ralph talk to you about that bill? Because I know that they weren't wanting to pay it.
Oh, yes. We've been very active on that issue, and, but the, the Milton supervisor who looked into it agrees with us that that one bill can't possibly be for the library. A driver filled the library tank two days in a row. A tank that holds a thousand gallons put in eight hundred one day and five hundred and fifty gallons. Impossible.
Yeah, exactly.
Ask him, ask him to turn the thermostat down.
But the supervisor had to, had to send it to his boss because he couldn't figure it out. So, he was going to take the, he was going to go there with the driver sometime this week and hope that if the driver was standing there, he might be able to remember where he's been.
Interesting comment on the thermostat. And I love the library. It's great. I went in there, and I was so hot, and I thought it's because I walked to the library. And I was at the turn-in desk, and there's a thermostat, seventy-four degrees.
Holy cow.
That's warm.
Bring that up at the meeting. I know, ever since that we got, you know, at, at the post office, since we had the new thing installed, we have it at sixty-eight, and that is the warmest it's been. And that is a really efficient system. So, I'd like to thank the board that approved that whenever, because it, it's not a...
John, John didn't want to.
Well, you could have came over there in the summer, let me tell you.
He said, bring in a fire pit.
Buy him a quart of wood, is what he said.
And I know where, and I know where to get the paper from now. But, yeah, I'll mention, I'll mention turning it down, so.
I mean, I, I don't know if that's normal or not. I just thought, wow.
That's something we should have as a policy, some point for all our buildings. And I, I know other areas got a centralized control where they're all set.
Like my aunt said, get up and move, put a foot around.
Anything else on library?
Sixty miles.
Marina and Marina Fest.
I'll do Marina and Marina Fest. We'll let, let Chair there do. Marina Committee, the notes or minutes that are in your packet are from February fourth, which we discussed last time. We had a meeting this morning, a Saturday for Marina. The main thing we're talking about is changing some of the bylaws for Marina Fest, which I'll let Shane get into. And then we were going, you know, looking at priorities for long-term, short-term comprehensive planning, and what we're going to go for the Marina.
How are we with reservations and such?
Reservations were, reservation, I didn't ask her today on what, if they had any reservations in, but for slips, we had eight thirty-two-foot slips come available, six of them she filled, sold. So, we have two open thirty-foot slips, and we have three open forties that she's working on that list.
And one fifty.
And one fifty. Possibility of the fifty, she asked how they, they would take it today. But she's just on the residence list going forward, so she's moving forward with that.
Done with renewals, moving to waiting.
Yeah, they're, they're going to the waiting, and she's done a very good job, in my mind, of a hundred and fifty slips, if that's all we have, with the economy and the price of what the turnover. And she said that all the slips that are vacant are coming from age or price. Okay? It's either they've gotten to the point where they're old enough they're not boating anymore, or they're paying the, the price to boat anymore, or it's the, the price of the, the slip type thing. So, we're, we're kind of reaching the, the ceiling on our pricing for, for slips, even though we're competitive. The door, we're still reaching that cap.
And then as far as Marina Fest goes, we're working forward, getting everything, I guess, all of our ducks in a row for Marina Fest, and we're looking at trying to make some amendments to the, I guess, more additions to the bylaws to potentially include for-profit organizations without hindering or breaking the current bylaws that we have in place now. So, we're not, I guess, taking anything away from the heart of what's already there. We really want to make sure that we protect that. But just trying to make sure that we can grow this event to maximize the outlay for everybody, and especially in a time when our downtown is going to need a little help. So, we're going to try to see if we can grow that festival, so we're bringing more and more heads into beds and, you know, bodies into stores.
Anything else? Questions? Parks. Minutes are in there from the meeting of February fifth.
So, there is the word ski hill in these minutes one side.
Yeah.
I'll let you know. My wife says, we're getting a ski hill, yeah! Time out. There's no ski hill going out.
Well, wait a minute. We've had, we've had some discussion since.
Gondola, the boy says, can we get a gondola?
Waterfront and the sports complex.
Well, I did talk to Steve Jacobson the other day about putting the zipline in on the new water tower.
Did you like that?
Yes, I was going to point out the ski hill.
Yeah, line forty, a small ski hill. That's okay. Got my kids, my whole family's really excited.
They read the minutes, too, huh?
Somebody called my wife, did you hear? We're going to get a ski hill.
Maybe we need to rethink this. It shouldn't be a sweaty... Just in the summer, soapbox derby hill, and in the winter, ski hill.
Giant water slide.
Did she get this from Scan? No, did she get this from Scan? I, I have to tell this story. Well, you're saying ski hill. Zeke went to Scan and gave him a presentation about all the stuff that the village is doing. Okay? Great, great forward-thinking, showing them and all that. I go to dinner, and I, and a person's dad's in the, you know, in Scan, says, what is this that I hear? We're buying, the village is buying Caspersen property, tearing it down and building a pavilion on it. That was the translation that came out of Scan.
Are you saying that our administrator doesn't communicate with us?
Must be the accent.
I think there might have been a little bit of hearing problem.
Okay, anything else on parks? Moving right along. Personnel.
Admin.
Plan Commission.
Military included.
And there's no March Plan Commission.
No.
Communication Technology.
That's not left.
For this planning, too. S B A A.
Uh, the minutes that are in your packet are from the discussion we had last month, and unfortunately, I was unable to make the meeting due to a baby appointment.
I guess just a quick rundown on it. We had a snag in the production of a map for to truly be what S B A A stands for, which is representative of the entire community. And we went back, took it to the drawing board a couple of times, and finally have gotten a map that we think will be representative of the entire community. Also distributing open flags that will be uniformly displayed throughout the village. Those were kind of the big things to, to come out there.
Teen Center.
We met two weeks ago, but there was not a quorum, but we still stayed around and discussed community outreach things and volunteering to fundraise...
All in unofficial capacity.
Yeah, in unofficial capacity. So, we talked about fundraising for Robbie, and I would like to talk to S B A A. I, I was reading the minutes about the fundraiser for the run. I think that would be a good thing, so I'll talk to Paige, and maybe even a run during Marina Fest.
Well, we, we had some conversation earlier today that the, when you had that conversation, the kids at Jabalton High School used to do a dump boot or dump tank, and I guess have dropped doing that, so that might be something to, that'd be fun to do.
The dump tank, especially at Marina, it's warm enough to do it, not at Fall Fest, but the...
Yeah. We have Marina Fest, and we're going to need to come up with something else for Fall Fest, and we'll talk about it.
Oh, you're getting a goat dump tank.
Really? We'll need to up here with a, you're drowning goats.
Sink, spin.
Buy your goat bucks to sink, spin.
Wait, wait, they were goat bucks.
Okay, tourism, so.
Yep. Met, and I have a couple of things. Number one, December occupancy rate for the villages of Sister Bay was fourteen point three eight percent. So, in the future, we need to look at items we can do to change that. I also have one other issue that came up, and that is, we have one delinquency that's delinquent back from four thirteen and five thirteen, of a hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents in April of thirteen, and thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents in May of thirteen.
Okay, so they've done a very good job of collecting them in the past. What's the problem? And why are we talking about it here?
I'm bringing it up simply so you know they've done a pretty good job of collecting, but we will have to withhold a liquor license from a hotel if they earn a forthcoming payment.
And they will be made aware of that prior to the liquor license...
They have been made aware a number of times. Our promises to pay have been broken with T Z C, and I'm going to pay a personal visit to there to see if I can make something happen.
Strong Armond.
Do you happen to know what the occupancy rate from the prior December was, the comparison?
I can pull it up for you.
I'm just curious.
I actually got a chart on them, all of them, so if you get them from us on the store.
I believe it's up this year from what I was looking at.
I was wondering, even though it's cold with all the snow, I thought we got a lot of snow bill or something.
No, I think the county's up, but Sister Bay's down because we don't have the construction.
It's a couple percent, yeah.
And I always take the tourism's own numbers with a little grain of salt. Everybody can say that Sister Bay is off because of construction, but overall, general business within Door County is off about twenty-five percent this winter. So, is that because of construction in Sister Bay?
No.
No.
Cold, it's too cold.
So, I know occupancy is up a little bit in Sister Bay because they've done, there's several long-term projects going on around other communities, and they're staying in Sister Bay.
Yeah. The, the fourteen point three eight percent number is not off. Like, for example, Sturgeon Bay, eight point seven nine, you know, was their number. I didn't write that down, just for comparison reasons. So, we had a higher occupancy rate than Sturgeon Bay did in that same time period.
Utility.
They also had a meth lab.
Pick cash.
And you know, that was like right after Miss...
No, it's a good thing you're off the board now.
Oh, man. Sorry.
Utility.
Won't be meeting till next month.
Admin and compensation.
We're scheduled.
Yes, yeah, soon.
Next Tuesday.
Do we have, so utilities will just be, sorry, it's going to be Tuesday the first, Ben?
No.
No.
The eighth.
Tuesday the eighth.
Versus election day.
All right.
Waterfront Oversight.
Military included.
There's also an other on here that's not listed, and that would be the zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes. The zoning Board of Appeals met and granted a variance for a property up on Shaway Lane to locate a garage a little bit closer to the private drive than would be ordinarily considered in the zoning book. They also made a recommendation that will come to Plan Commission at their next meeting to consider altering the zoning code, because they, I guess, had quite a few of these in recent years, similar issues.
Okay, very close now. Do you want to go to that, Zeke?
Um, yeah, this, Public Relations, just an update, and this is, I'm going to go back to item number eight, if you're okay with that, discussion of items. We have tried to put up a valiant effort as, as a result of this construction. Hopefully, we'll just continue this on, on after construction. Janelle, if you all have seen the article in The Advocate, comes out weekly. Janelle's the one that is spin.
Yes, and you're doing an outstanding job.
Isn't she doing a great job?
That's, that was sorely needed, and you've really done a great job.
There's that. Again, everything we try to put in there is positive. I write one once a month for the Pulse, and so you should see that one there as well. And then, as part of the Sister Bay Bose, which Mr. Leno was gracious enough to set up so that we could have a radio outlet as well on W S B W, right? So, Monday mornings, coffee club. Hopefully, we'll start to get some folks that come in and ask questions, sort of have a one-on-one format. The monies that you all authorized me to expend to try to do some promotion of Sister Bay, we tried to, in terms of paid media, come up with some things that would be creative. And so, what Janelle has is an audio file of the first radio app that will begin to go out starting next week. radio ad that will begin to go out starting next week, and will run through the first week of the night.
Read it. Do you have it with you?
She's going to play it for you.
Read it. It's fantastic.
Start her up.
... caused by a pothole, a one-way road, or a minor detour. Sister Bay is still alive and well. You will be too. Don't let a little road construction project get in your way. Be thankful that you don't live in the big city where getting around every day is an issue. Getting around Sister Bay may be a little slower, but you will get there safe and sound. Don't forget, the village of Sister Bay is still alive and well. And remember, this ad is longer than the detour.
Will you play from the beginning again?
Sure. Could you put a microphone on? I'm Sheriff Terry Vogel.
That's how I see it was.
Can you grab it up, Mike?
Here.
Sounds like Jake Wayne.
I'm Sheriff Terry Vogel. Death has hardly ever been caused by a pothole, a one-way road, or a minor detour. Sister Bay is still alive and well. You will be too. Don't let a little road construction project get in your way. Be thankful that you don't live in the big city where getting around every day is an issue. Getting around Sister Bay may be a little slower, but you will get there safe and sound. Don't forget, the village of Sister Bay is still alive and well. And remember, this ad is longer than the detour.
Yeah, the idea was to be funny, be cute, be positive, and that's sort of the outlook that we're going to pursue. And unless you all will put it on as a board action item to get involved in the micromanagement of that, I'm going to continue on that track that you guys probably authorized me to do. So do we like that? Do we not like that?
Yeah, that's good. I like that you got the sheriff in there.
Yeah.
It makes people, it makes people pay attention.
It'll help you.
Yes.
Okay.
That was good. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn.
Get it. Second. Second. All in favor? Thank you. Good evening.